Okay, ready? Okay. After six, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome to the November 14th for the selectmen meeting, open to the meeting a little bit after six. Well, just about six. I guess we'll take up the building projects and implications for financial management. We have David Isotall and Linda Sanderson here to roll things with us. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And show of yours.
As we understand it, we're looking at the borrowing for potentially all three projects beginning this spring. It was when we first talked about this a few years back, when we had a borrowing plan, it wasn't at that time contemplated that all three would be beginning in the very same season, but that's what we're at. And it's presented its own set of challenges as to whether we are going to, if that's what you decide to do, how we are going to do the financing that might be different than what we originally intended. Now, the parameters are still trying to manage that annual impact on the tax rate that was promised when we first went through. And it looks like, you know, that is definitely something that we're keeping in the plan. And we have worked with David Isotall closely over the last few weeks. He's our financial advisor at Financial Services. And to try and decide how and when we are going to do the borrowing for these projects based on two scenarios. One is whether we are going to continue with the plan, the original plan, which was finish the senior center and then begin the library, which would put the library about a year further out than if they weren't beginning at the same time. I know there's other factors for you to consider, but our role then is to see, can that be managed? And how would we manage if we were to be borrowing and have the library begin in March, April, May, that timeframe with the other buildings? So with that, I will hand it over to David Isotall.
Chairman Chair.
Thank you.
Members of the board. The Treasurer, Linda, and the Town Administrator, David, requested that I prepare some updated financing models for the major capital projects, as well as the smaller equipment renovation and other capital purposes. And I'll point out that the town has $2.76 million worth of notes coming due on March 15th, which is a key date in all of this. And as Linda indicated, the town is looking to mobilize on the fire stations and new center and perhaps the library within the next six months. And we understand that part of the decision-making process tonight or in the next few weeks is the timing of the library project. So we produced five models. What we call 1A is bonds for major and minor purposes in June of 2019, assuming a slower library project. 1B is bonds for major and minor purposes, June of 19, faster library. 2A is bonds just for the major and other long-term issues, leaving the smaller equipment items to be financed short-term, assuming a slow library. Model 2B is doing the same thing, only assuming a faster track for the library. And then the final one, 3A, is bonds in 2019 with a faster-track library. All of these assume that the town would issue additional short-term notes next month, December of 2018, for the fire and senior center, although as it will become evident, it becomes more important with a faster library project that this proceed. It also assumes short-term notes in January 2020 and bonds in January 2021. So two bond issues, June of 19, January 2021 is what we're assuming at this point. The considerations here, the most important one is cash flow for the projects. We wanted to make sure that whatever models we presented would provide sufficient cash flow for the projects to proceed, meeting the debt service impacts that have been discussed over the last few years, particularly for the debt exclusions. Changing interest rate environment, looking at what we're expecting as far as rates on short and long-term borrowing. And then there were some technical issues, trying to stay, keep the borrowing under $10 million for each of the calendar years. That's one reason we're looking at a short-term borrowing in December 2018 to free up capacity in 2019. Generally, this produces lower rates, other things being equal, and would give the town a little bit more flexibility if other items, other smaller equipment items, for example, are authorized by the town meeting. The other issue, technical issue, that we had to pay attention to was complying with state law requirements relative to the repayment of principal, both when it starts, which is within the fiscal year following the date of issuance for bonds. And then we have to, you would have to be amortizing, paying back the principal at least as fast as level debt service or at least as fast as a mortgage. That doesn't mean you have to pay level all of the time, but the net effect over 30 years has to be like a mortgage, basically. So that's how we approach this. Now, in discussing this with the Town Administrator and the Treasurer, models 1B and 3A, we kind of dismissed those. We felt that 1B is, again, that's doing bonds for all of the purposes, assuming a faster library project. We felt that the overall and annual cost impacts would not justify, if the library project is faster, doing a bond issue for basically everything that's outstanding and then a good chunk of everything else in June of 19 would not be justified. 3A is delaying the first bond issue to December of 2019. Given what we think our increasing interest rate environment, the increasing interest rate environment, we didn't feel that that would be justified either. So we're really looking at, if the library proceeds more slowly, we'll look at models 1A or 2A. And there may be some, if the project, well, we may look at opportunities to refine the repayment of principal on the smaller items to produce even a more smooth tax rate impact over time. If the library proceeds faster, model 2B would be the likely focus. And again, we would refine the paydowns in future years and try to get some of those years to be a little lower than what we're showing here, but I think that's probably how we would look to proceed would be that model 2B. Now, I will comment, in terms of the financial effects of a faster library project, I don't think there's basically a huge impact. There would be larger borrowing, short-term, in the end of calendar 2018 and during 2019. And that's, the effect of that is somewhat offset by the fact that the rates are expected to be lower earlier. Also, if the library goes faster, it will be paid off faster. The last payment we're projecting on a slower library project is the year 2050. If it's, if with a faster library project, the last payment would be in 2049. Not a huge difference, but just enough to kind of offset what would be some additional financing costs associated with a faster library project, assuming, based on what we would.
I won't even be alive by then for that.
How about taking this day?
Some of these years, you think, you look ahead, it's quite remarkable, but that's only 30 years.
What I'm leaving everybody, huh? Oh, Lord. So, that's true. Think about it. Yeah, 30 years onto your life there.
So they give you your golden cane on the side.
The important thing is, will the fire station, senior center, and library be here in 30 years?
There you go. So that's what you're leaving.
Yeah.
So I guess the one last thing I'll comment on is that, not knowing how you, as the board, Chairman Chair, want to proceed, we'd want to have the option, if you do decide to proceed with a faster library project, to proceed with a short-term note of approximately $2.6 million. And we would be notifying the banks on the 29th of November. Linda would take bids on the 6th of December. You would be meeting and signing the note and other documents on December 12th, and settled, it would be December 19th. Those notes would mature in July and would be permanently financed with that June of 2019 bond issue.
You can give me all these numbers, but what is the rate that we're going to be locked in at?
Well, for this short-term note, I'm thinking it's going to be somewhere in the high 2s. Looking for June of, for a 30-year bond issue in June, we're projecting somewhere a little above 4%. And for the January of '21 issue, I think we're around 4.5% is what the projection is. All of these rates are projections, subject to change, but that's.
So is the 2% down to 2.6?
That's on the 2.6, that would be in December. 2.75 is actually what we're projecting for that rate.
David, could you talk?
It's too bad we didn't do what Brian West wanted to do several years ago and just take out 10 million then, huh?
When it was 1%.
1%, yeah.
Remember that.
Just keep it in the cash. Remember Brian doing that?
I remember that.
Yeah.
Can you, you touched on it a little bit, but I'm just, so with the slower versus faster library modeling, borrowing capacity?
Well, the capacity with respect to bank qualification, which is not, you know, it would not be a tragedy for the town if the town issued not bank-qualified, which, and I'll explain, bank qualification is a provision of the Tax Reform Act of 1986, which says that issuers that issue tax-exempt securities of $10 million or less in a calendar year get the benefit of, well, or the purchasers of those securities get this benefit of special tax treatment, a different tax treatment, that benefits the issuers with lower interest rates. The importance actually for Hadley of bank qualification is that, as a typical way of doing business, the town issues relatively small amounts of notes through the State House. State House notes, you know, can be less than a million or maybe more than a million. It's accumulated to be a little more than that recently, but if town meeting, you know, if for some reason the town wanted to borrow, say, $400,000 and wanted to go, you know, solicit bids from ESB, Bank ESB, and Greenfield Cooperative, and Greenfield Savings. If the town were not bank-qualified in a given year, it would be harder to get economic rates from those banks for those small borrowings. So that's one reason that if we can keep bank qualification, that would be justified. You know, if the, and I was saying to David and Linda before, if the way, if the statutes were different here, it might make sense, although I think if 10 million several years ago would have led into various problems, but if the statutes were different, a $16 million bond issue in June could make sense. The reason it's not so much the bank qualification, it's the fact that we don't want to have that impact all hitting the town in '20. So that's one reason we're looking at an issue in.
Again, impact, you're referring to the tax rate.
Tax rate, yes. June of 19, January of '21, we don't want to hit all at once. And that's because, under the Mass General laws, bonds, the first payment of principal has to happen in the year following, fiscal year following issuance. So for the '19 bonds, it's fiscal '20. For the '21 bonds, it'll be '22. In other states with, where I do business, it's three years, five years. If you had that kind of flexibility, we might look at a $16 million issue and kind of say, well, we don't need the flexibility, we're going to grab a good rate on the financing because we'd be able to manage the impact a little bit more to where we'd like it to be for the taxpayers of Hadley. So I hope that that's, I'm sort of meandering around.
No, yeah, that's part of it. And then the other part I'm just trying to get at too is, let's say, God forbid, we wind up with the need for an emergency borrowing, an infrastructure issue, something like that happens that we're not anticipating. Is either scenario giving us more leeway to absorb something like that?
Doing the $2.6 million borrowing next month definitely gives you more flexibility if something comes up during calendar year 19.
I think that's a good idea, just because of some of the other reasons we talked about getting things moving financially.
But the $2.6 million is only going to be if we had, if we fast-forward the library?
Probably, although we were looking at that even if the library wasn't.
Interesting, what's the downside of doing it regardless of?
We borrowed it three months earlier, and so we're, and not using it, so we have principal that we, we're carrying the interest payment next year that we may pay back will have been for three months longer than it would have needed to be.
Yes, so three months of interest out of 2%.
Three months of interest, which we'd eventually be paying, but we, you know, we'd be very crazy.
That's why I'm interested in that.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure it was clear that the $2.6 million that we would be borrowing would be, even though we're sort of tying this to the decision about the library, that would be library borrowing.
It's just a borrowing.
The impact of the library happening in 2019 necessitates us, you know, are looking at this possibility of borrowing earlier, but the borrowing would be for the things already, would be for the senior center, assuming that is squared away next week, and to get going on the fire station. So it would be for those two projects because the library is, gets its start from the grant payments. We have already had one $780,000 grant payment, and we have another one that comes in, it's February or March, as I recall from last year, and that comes in for five years, we get the $780,000 grant. So we get going with those, we don't actually need to borrow for the library until a little bit later.
So how long, or how far along does that get us with the senior center and the fire station as far as the 2.6, or how much, what phase of the project will that take us through?
It takes care of the senior center and the fire station through the rest of this fiscal year, which includes two to three months of construction, includes them starting at the timeline that they say that they needed. The fire station was set to begin, if all goes well, they'll be beginning in May first. So we took, this takes care of finishing up the design cost, the preliminary cost, and two months of construction. So that would be for May and June. Let's see, which one starts May first? March first would be.
Senior Center.
Senior Center, March first.
So if we were going to, this is jumping ahead a little bit, but if we're going to accelerate the projects and do both of them at the same time, would we have the money?
Which projects?
Libraries.
The library and senior center, would we have the money to demolish the Hooker School? And where's that funding coming from?
We would be doing more borrowing in March.
More borrowing in March.
Okay.
And actually, there's going to be more borrowing in March in any case. I think that the idea of doing the December borrowing would be that it would allow the March borrowing to stay under $3 million, which would be easier to do through the State House rather than with a more complicated disclosure document, legal opinion from bond counsel. So that would be one reason to do the December issue regardless of how fast the library goes. But certainly, if the library goes faster, it would be even better for the town to proceed with that December no issue.
David, we touched upon it in our conversations, but we didn't dwell upon it, bond rating? Would we have a three upper bond rating?
The, with a $6 million, I think we would be looking at possibly doing this with a faster library for the March ban issue, possibly then, certainly in June of 19, we would be requesting another rating from S and P Global Ratings. So possibly March, definitely June would be the answer.
And there anything here that is detrimental to the bond rating? Shouldn't be.
I don't think that the amount of debt we're talking about, given the size of the tax base, other factors, would be a major concern, but as we move forward, we will keep an eye on that, especially as we get closer to a fiscal 2018 audit, and we'll get what those results look like.
So we wouldn't be locking into any long-term rate then according to the schedule until June of 2019?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
And that's for the substation?
Yeah, there would be.
Fire.
Fire substation, the senior, part of the senior center, and then the HVAC projects, the land acquisition for the fire station, and I think those would be the major items included in the bond issue.
I thought we already had paid for the land acquisition?
That's our, as bond anticipation notes, that's actually part of the 2.6.
Okay. So you would convert it all into one?
Yeah, that would be a rollover.
Okay.
So you just need to convince the Fed then that the, yeah, there's some signs of potential weakness in the economy so that they don't get too.
Well, he's going to get right out.
That's why we came in the big fight.
Jane.
Yes.
So if you see the interest rates going up, which is a potential, would you change your borrowing schedule?
Once we get into a bond, we're still looking at a bond under 2B for June.
Right. I mean, I think that that's, the idea is that we're going as fast as practicable here with as much of the issue as we can, given the fact that I think it's likely that interest rates are going to increase.
I believe that when we initially did the charts back when we were having these buildings approved, that I think we were using a 5%.
That's right.
Interest rate back then.
For the $95,000.
For the $5,000, for those particular, what was on the table at that time. We were using 5% to be conservative, knowing this was going to be a few years out. So that's why we're still able to stay within those parameters. We were hoping for three.
Well, I think that's.
Maybe a year ago.
David Stumm is before.
Yeah.
Five, six months.
So 2B, is that the one that borrows the largest amount the soonest? Is that what we're looking at?
Well, so what it does is that it, just for the bond issue in June, it just does the fire, senior center, not all of those projects, but a substantial portion of those projects, plus the land for the fire, HVAC, and maybe some other projects. What it does is that it leaves the equipment purchases in short-term debt, which I believe that the administration of the town, the Town Administrator and the Treasurer like the idea of the flexibility to be able to pay down the principal more flexibly than would be the case with a bond issue. Bond issue, you would be locked into set principal payments over time. I think they like the idea of, depending on what resources look like in a given year, being able to either increase or decrease the payment of principal.
Right. If you look down the, the second page of each of these is the debt exclusion chart itself. And you look in the final column of what's being paid, you see it goes up, it goes down. It doesn't, it's just not just a steady, a steady down. And so we would be using the band payments as a way of smoothing that out. So we pay a little bit more in the lower years, and then we maybe hold back on, as long as we're keeping an eye on making sure that we get them paid off, each of the items within their own timeframe, once we, so we like to keep those out so that we have that. If we put everything into a bond, then we're stuck with that payment. We're stuck with that. And if it's good, if the better interest rate is also a good deal, but it will have a fluctuating impact on the tax.
One thing I'll point out, just to make sure that this is clear, and I think that one reason that we're structuring things this way is to make the tax rate setting process for this year a little bit easier. The bands that would be taken out in June actually mature in July, so those won't be raised until the fiscal 2020 tax rate. But you'll still have, on the 20 bond issue, you will have to pay a first principal payment in 2020. So there's a little bit of an additional cost, but it does simplify the tax rate. Rather than having those bands come due in June, where you would have to make an estimate as you're setting your tax rate now for 2019, by doing, by having the bands come due in July, this simplifies that part of the process.
And you had said that before.
Yep.
I remember you saying that. Yeah.
I've got, I've got a little seed downside.
I think the rates are only going to go up, and I think that the quicker we can get moving on this, the less chance we have of things popping up that cause issues. And then as long as we can keep the tax rate as promised.
Yep. And it more or less is, and I'll say it, I'll say it that way, we had that amount that we said, that it would, that it would stay, the increase above the 2007 rates, and with some smoothing out, I think it will, it will be there. But that 95, you have to realize, didn't include the extra amount that we put in for the fire station. It's not going to include the vote that we have next month on the new, every time the town goes back and votes for something else, that's going to be an addition to it. So again, in that last column, what I have in mind is the goal for under our, including our buildings and everything voted to date, is, you know, to keep it about $1,175,000. And then if, you know, that goes up, obviously, if we, which are factored in, are the new items, if they pass, that will bring that amount up 30,000. And so it changes what we're working with, but that is, that does absolutely continue. It's not something we started for a couple of years and thought, maybe they'll forget. No, we are definitely trying to, you know, stay within those parameters.
And just, so just to kind of in a nutshell, then, the decision on whether or not to accelerate the construction of the library, as you noted, there are many, many considerations on that. Financing was a huge one because it was a potential no-go, right? I mean, depending on what you came back with. So I mean, I think what I'm hearing you say is that you have a scenario that regardless of the decision at this point, from a funding standpoint, you can make it happen.
There's not a huge difference between a faster and a slower library project from a financing, from a financing perspective.
But we're not going to pay on it yet, on the library, if you fast-tracked it right now?
The first interest payment on the library, if you fast-track it, would be in fiscal '20. There would be an interest payment on bands that would be issued in March to, that would be, it would be necessary to borrow, whether it's two and a half or three or three and a half million dollars in March, there would be a need if the library is fast-tracked to borrow some amount. And the current plan would be to have those notes come due in January 2020, fiscal year 20.
So the real financial impact, and again, this isn't necessarily proven, but it's a key talking point of accelerating the project, is the presumption that the original library quote, if you will, or the amount that we're using for financing, is potentially with acceleration going to be a smaller number because of the escalators that are built into the library project, starting out a year from now. So it's possible that we would actually be spending less, which we'll be talking about momentarily. So that ultimately could mean that at the high, at the point that you're having to borrow at the highest rates, you're borrowing less.
It could be because, yes, we're going to be, because of the grant money that we have, there will be less borrowing for the library in fiscal 19, the one we're in now, than for the other buildings because we have, it has start with the other money. So we'd only be borrowing about 1.6 million this year. So the bulk of their borrowing would be the following year and put off after that. So you have time to make, well, yes.
Yes.
Correct. You said it right.
I just want to make sure that that logic is holding. So again, you're not factoring any of that in right now. You're taking the existing, projection, thank you, you know, projections as we believe to be at the moment, and you're just taking those numbers and putting them in here.
I, we're assuming that. I, we're assuming that $3,786,292, which is the amount of local share that the town meeting authorized, would be permanently financed in a bond issue in January 2021 with the library.
Okay, we've assumed the voted amount for every building.
Right.
Regardless of whether they're big or small, or later sooner.
2B sounds good to me, that seems like the most accelerated.
Well, you can say 2B, but now you need to.
Now we have to talk.
Yeah. Whether or not, it would be frugal enough. And we want to set up another meeting for the 28th.
Right.
Of November. Right, that's, that's the only thing that we're, we're looking for from you is that if we're going to be, we want to be ready to make sure we can get some of this borrowing out of the way in '18 so it doesn't impact '19. Doesn't mean, yes, that leaves your option open. If you were not going to fast-track the library, we might wait on all the borrowing until March, but there's still other reasons to borrow it in December, and if you're open to that.
Well, I think that's where, at least, I think where David and I are coming from is we're not really sure. The only pressing issue you have is that you need to know if we're going to make that borrowing. It seems prudent to do it anyway, regardless of the decision we make on the library.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you might be paying interest for a few months or some.
Right.
I mean, it does mean that the borrowing in March, if the library is slower, could proceed through the Bureau of Accounts. I think we'd make that, we'll reserve that judgment, but more likely that that would be the case. If the library is faster, the March issue will need to have the disclosure legal and would be a little bit more complicated for the town to, and a little bit more expensive.
But the, I just think the potential downside is much less than waiting, you know, for next year and seeing what rates do, even if we decide to, to wait on the library until, you know, or go ahead, I should say, with a slower schedule on the library. I think it's.
Can you, I'm sorry, what you just said about the March date, borrowing date in the library?
That it will be slightly more expensive if, but I don't, I stand by what I said before, that it's not a big difference, but it is slightly more expensive to proceed with a faster library project, simply because it would be, the March borrowing would need to be larger, could require a legal opinion of bond counsel and a disclosure document in order to.
Yeah, thank you. Something that we would have to incur at some point, so just to.
I just didn't, thank you. So would you have agenda if we authorized you tonight to go ahead with the December bar?
We talked about doing a November one, Joyce, you know, it's really, it's really up to you. I know one reason we were waiting is to make sure the decision went through next week. You don't, you know, we don't want to borrow money.
Well, you sure, it would be contingent upon, yeah, the November 20th.
On the assumption that all is well. Yeah, I mean, I thought we, that was jumping the gun, but if you want to do a contingent vote, that would be fine.
Get it all the way.
So, so the next thing we would be looking for you to do is actually sign the papers. And Christian's not, so we have minus two members.
No, December 12th would be.
Yeah, signing on December 12th. Oh, just signing on the 12th.
Bits on the 6th. That would be maybe, well, I have, we'd have to notify on the 28th, on 29th.
Do the bidding on the 6th, okay.
Do the bidding on the 6th.
We have a meeting on the 12th.
And we'd be signing on the 20th.
Can I make a motion to approve the 2B model borrowing contingent upon a approval of the site plan on November 20th by the planning board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll find out next week.
It sounds good.
Now we get to talk about all the other stuff.
Not much to talk about, except to say that, you know, there's. A lot of things that.
We have a grant document that also needs to be notarized.
Okay, I won't be going anywhere. Will you be downtown?
Well, I think she has it.
Okay. Oh, I'll.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, thank you.
Thank you, David. And Linda.
She's, she's going next, she's got to do another notary, add another paper.
Patrick, did you?
Hello, can you bring up the water grants, the documents, so we can get those notarized, please?
I'll keep it to myself. All right, so I suppose now you wanted to go into, we don't have, it was such a short notice for the building committee to be here. And Willie, you're here tonight, and it wasn't fair, I think, to them that at last week's meeting, to give them such short notice. I know a majority of them go to the Legion dinners, and that's where they are tonight. So unfortunately, they're not with us to elaborate. They did send some emails on their concerns about the senior center and the oil, the asbestos, and whatever else they may find in there as the building is being taken down.
Do you mean, I'm sorry, when you said building committee, do you mean?
Building committee.
Oh, municipal building committee, okay.
Yeah, we only have, we only have one municipal building committee.
Yeah, and you're municipal, so I just was confused.
No, I didn't say that, but there's all kinds, but I'm talking, I'm talking about.
No, I'm sorry.
Talking about the municipal building committee. So in all fairness to them for not being here, I think we need to give them more notice than a week or even, you know, a couple of days, because I know other people have plans that they've already planned on. So I don't think it was fair to, you know, pinpoint anybody and blame anybody for not notifying them because they've already had plans for this week anyway. So we can move forward, I think. Do we want to go into the senior center and see how we would? When you start the project, you're going to be, I mean, this is where it all gets a little bit tricky, between the library and fast-tracking them and the seniors and moving them out of the building so you can demolish the senior center and move them someplace else for the time being. So all of that needs to be taken into consideration, which we haven't really delved into. We've touched on, but not formally done anything. So I guess that's, that's where we're at, whether or not we do fast-track with the library, move the seniors someplace else, and what everybody's wish is at this point. And I think that, you know, is a bit of discussion.
So are you saying you're not discussing that now, or are you?
No, I'm asking you to discuss it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said without them.
Well, we don't have them here to chime in on it. So yes, we have the library here, yes, we have the senior center here, and we've heard from everybody on a weekly basis, but nobody has actually touched in on, you know, what's going to actually happen. You have a so-called plan for the seniors to move to Most Holy Redeemer. We've had some conversation with the priest on that.
Have the media to have a good one, some conversation on that.
I, so are we contemplating whether to do them both? Is it, we're going to talk about tonight whether to do them both at the same time, or what, because, I'll just put my opinion out there, I think we should move them both forward at the same time and find the flex space that we need in order to make the senior centers programs work in the meantime and get them moving. But I know that's going to create two moves for you guys, but I guess, is there any showstoppers on your guys' end?
No, there aren't any showstoppers on our end, but there needs to be a lot more discussion to make it happen well. There are just a couple of things that I'll mention that should be variables when we're talking about this scenario. I don't, I'm not privy to any of the conversations insofar as what the cost of being over there is. I know when I went over and looked, Father Peter said, because it is the property of the bishops, that they have somebody in Springfield at the bishop's office that handles rentals and that that negotiation or renting would have to go through them. There was no, he had no clue what that would be. I can tell you that we do not have that money available in our budget because of how many times we've been put off in the escalation fees, even though the building has been reduced.
Just a minute, Joanne, wait a minute. Okay, just a minute.
So, so the cost of where renting, the cost of renting needs to be really looked into. I don't know what that cost is or how you're going to finance that. The oil, I guess, is something that everybody needs to know about. I did have a conversation with Tim Nyheart this past week, a couple of months ago, when the whole idea of moving early and going over there came up. I had emailed him and said, please put me on the agenda for the next municipal building committee meeting so we can start talking logistics, because I haven't done this before. I want to know how long the process is going to take, what I need to do between now and then to do that. I've started talking with my team there. We only have myself and one other full-time person. So deciding what to take with us, is it too difficult? Because basically, we're a human service organization, so all of our people files need to be available to us every day. Programming happens on a very transportable basis, so I don't see that as a huge issue. I was thinking of trying to find a way to have my outreach worker put in a couple hours every week extra over her 10 hours because she could delve through all those people files as a jumpstart and help us kind of get that process underway. I also need to talk with the interior designer of our architect firm to see what she was looking at budget-wise for furnishings so that I can say yea or nay to anything in the building. And then the whole process would need to, anything other than that, where's it going to go? How long is that going to take to set up and get out of there? So all of these logistical things need to happen. I can't see me being able to be ready to do that by February, but I'm not opposed to doing it when the snow melts. I've gone over there, it's a fine space. We'll be able to have all of our programming over there, and we'll actually have a summer with air conditioning while the new building's being built. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. The Wi-Fi will need to be moved over, and our number will need to get transferred over. You're going to want to talk about storage for any of the things that don't go over with us, that we will be using in the next building. So those are the immediate variables without sitting down with the municipal building committee. I know there's a four-month window between, Tim's telling me there's a real lag in utility shut-off when they actually come over with the paperwork, and you need to be ready. They could come over in a week from when you make that call, or it could be three months. So that's something that also needs to be dealt with, because when they do come over with that paper, you need to be ready to go because you're, everything's getting shut off. So these are all really fine, need to be fine-tuned if that scenario is being.
And of course, he threw the wrench out with like, well, you could be a month, you could be two months, you could be three months.
Exactly.
Of when they could actually do any of these services for us, so.
Right.
I'm sorry, so that'll be six months.
Yes, exactly, so I mean.
But if they come back early, let's say, you know, it could be six months, but if they come back early, that's it. It shuts out, and then we're like out of business because we don't.
Could I just have Jennifer and Linda, let's sign that for you so that you don't have to stay through?
I'll put it right by David for you.
Okay.
So if you could.
Who signs?
You sign there.
Yeah, I wanted to add something to what Suzanne was saying. And one of the things we haven't taken an official vote on yet at the library, but we've all, we've informally talked about it, is that since it would save us so much money, there's no reason why we, the trustees, wouldn't take a vote to put money towards your rental costs or anything above and beyond. Because, you know, when we're looking at building out later, we're looking at about $7,000 a week. Action, you know, cost, so why wouldn't the library, would be to our advantage to help pay and defer some of those costs for the senior centers? So that's all I wanted to say.
That's, my perspective on this is that if, if that 7,000 is true, then, I mean, we're saving a year's worth of, 52 times 7,000, whatever, and then plus whatever else comes up in the meantime, so.
I don't know that we could actually take it out of the grant money, but we have, you know, we have money we could take it out of. And we think it would only be fair, and we have to take an official vote, but we've talked unofficially, and everybody said, that's really logical. And I think the building committee also talked about it, the library building committee. So it's not something new or foreign to us. It seems like the neighborly thing to do to help.
So could I just toss out, I mean, to me, this is a classic, this is project management. So we, what we're talking about is, forget the actual buildings themselves, but just a project, getting everybody's head wrapped around everything that has to happen, who needs to be involved, who needs to do what and when, what information we need to actually make a fully formed decision so when somebody at Duncan Donut says, how much is this costing us, you can actually answer the question. So we, we've hit pieces of this, you know, and I think like the big obstacles, we've been able to remove in terms of pretty reasonable swing space plan. It has to be executed, but put the devils in the, in the details. And it seems to, to me, to lend itself to having like a point person responsible for flushing this whole thing out. And then that, I'm looking at Phil right now, too, so. But you, you, so we have the two OPMs, right? We've got DA Sullivan, and we've got Colliers on these projects, and then also on the North Abbey Substation. And I'm really worried about, I want to do it, but I'm worried about not doing it right. And doing it right today, but it's having some serious oversight. I mean, a part-time select board is not going to be able to manage three projects of this significance.
So Adam, and I have just the question of, and Billy, you're wonderful, and so is Mark, right? Like, but at some point, does there need to be like a neutral coordination?
Town person? Not a town person.
Not a town, like resident, like a representative of the, like, local town of this, you know?
Phil, do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, so in terms of our contract, the town to have, we are going to be present during construction. Is it going to be 40 hours a week? No. But on a job this size, generally speaking, we wouldn't propose to a town a 40-hour-a-week clerk of the works because generally speaking, a job like this, it's not in the town budget to afford that. But in terms of construction logistics, you know, this senior center project going on, this library project going on, all at once in the same site, it's been done before. I'm not overly concerned in terms of coordination effort between two groups of contractors. It's, it's not a super foreign thing. The big thing I would bring up, and I think I emailed it to Molly a little bit ago, is I wouldn't recommend setting up a bidding environment where you have these two projects competing against each other, meaning bidding at the same time. If you want to set up something where, you know, senior center bids, and a couple of months, three months later, the library bids, okay. But the issue is, you're not going to get a big-size contractors on these jobs. You, it's just, the job's not big enough for the big guy. So contractors of this size, sometimes if they have other work going on, they're only going to be able to bid on the senior center project, only be able to bid on the library project, only be able to, because you only have so many guys. So if you set up at the same time, you may get great contractors that are going to choose this project over that one, and so on. Whereas if you time it out right, maybe they see that, and they go, oh, this is really appealing. I have this group of guys that are in Western Mass as well as this group of guys. Let's attack the senior center project first, and then this group of guys is going to be finished up this project. We'll have them do a lot, you know, that'd be a lot more appealing to contractors than all at the same time. You're going to have the projects competing against each other.
So we, so we would go out.
Were you talking about staggering?
Three months.
Yeah, a few months, I mean, so the, yeah, there. I mean, so the, yeah, there are issues, so I'm saying all this, but like, for example, you may get contractor size such that that might not be enough. That's just what we have, you know? So, for example, when we were doing, reaching out to general contractors for the prequal process for the senior center project, you know, we pre-qualified X amount of GCs, you keep them in the loop as things are moving on with bid docs. And it just so happened, one of the pre-qualified came back and he said, hey, listen, we wanted to bid it, but the superintendent that we wanted on this project is at another project for the next eight months, and I don't want to do this job with some of the other folks that I have. So, you know, when you ask the question, what's the appropriate distance in terms of months? I don't know. I mean, ideally, it's, it's long enough where they're getting halfway through the senior center project, then, then they're bidding another project. That's ideal. I understand how they might not want to do that, so a couple months, three months, four, you know, but...
What about the possibility of one contractor that wants both projects?
Yeah, say a larger contractor that may want to do both at the same time.
Well, even a contractor that predominantly does jobs this size, he might have a current work capacity where he would love to see the scenario where he bids the senior center, attacks it hard, and then a couple months later goes after the library. It's just, it's a timing thing. In terms of these contractors that are going to work for these jobs, how busy are they at the time? That's really what it comes down to.
Couldn't the bid, couldn't the bid documents allow some flexibility in when they stop the work?
Well, I think as soon as we know next week what our answer is, we can go out to bid for the senior center.
Well, we're gonna...
January.
Yeah.
But I mean, that'll be the first to go out.
Right. So after next, so say next week, we're good to go, we're successful. For the next, you know, month plus after that, they're going to be revising the bid docs, senior center.
Yeah.
And then we re-advertise early slash mid-January and go through the bid process. But, you know, to speak to his question, yeah, I mean, technically speaking, could a, could a library project indicating the contract docs, construction to start, and that date be two months later? I mean, is that common? No, but, I mean, could you do it? Yeah. So...
Okay. Jane?
I was, I thought I was hearing a different thing from the board, which was the clerk of the works that would oversee the process of getting to the contracting and doing it.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I heard, too.
Yeah, up until the point where Phil and I pick it up.
Up until, up until the shovel's in the ground, we've got to get us moved, we've got to get Hadley Media moved, we've got to make all these other arrangements, and that's what you're looking for a third party to do.
Yeah.
Where's the money going to come for, for that?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Not from us.
Another, another, another cost of doing that.
So we do, Colliers does move services, management services all the time, so I mean, if you need assistance, you know, under our current contract, we can put as much time into it as we can and help you out. It's not a problem.
To coordinate it.
Yeah, to coordinate, facilitate it, middleman, you know? Just let me know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I'm extremely worried about not having that level of coordination.
It's a process.
Too much money and too many moving...
Somebody actually has to put together a flow chart, you know, of when things have to happen, yeah, like that, for the move. Not for the construction of the buildings, but for the move.
So how does the rest of the board bid? I mean, are you guys, you want to do them at the same time if it's doable, or are you not for that, or...
Well, I think we should take into consideration Phil's thing about not bidding them at the same time, but going one, one for one.
There's still going to be an overlap of construction.
And we always anticipated that. So like, you know, way back when, before we, you know, reduced the size of the building, we have in our bid docs, you know, showing, hey, FYI, GC for senior center, when you're two-thirds through construction, this project's going to start, you're going to have to coordinate with that, library GC. So we were anticipating that, not, you know, to the point where it might happen, you know, in terms of all at once, but...
You know, I, one thing I'd like is, and I know Mark Sullivan and Phil and Brian couldn't be here tonight, same thing, just with the short notice, they have their commitments tonight. But Phil, you, you and, and Mark, in the past, you've gotten your heads together and kind of come up with a coordinated response. I mean, I would love for you guys to talk to each other and then maybe come back and say, you can do A, B, or C, similar to what we did on the funding side?
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah.
I mean, is that okay to ask Mark to...
Relative to bidding schedule, is that what you're referring to, in terms of options?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Because I know, you know, when we were in the library building committee meetings with Mark there, he kind of ran us through multiple scenarios.
Yep.
Could you think you and he could get together before our December 5 meeting?
Yeah, we can set the call, yeah.
We could have each other on November 20, I think.
Yeah.
And he could come in on, on that day, and maybe we could see what we need to coordinate between the two buildings with the OPMs.
Yep.
And at that time, we'll put out, Jennifer, could you notify the building, municipal building committee to come to that meeting also?
To December 5?
December 5, yes.
Yes.
You send them an email tomorrow, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we will continue that.
Thank you.
Go that way?
Yeah.
And, you know, Phil, maybe when you and Mark are talking, too, it would be helpful just to have some bullet points about the potential coordination issues that could come up.
Yeah.
Pre-construction or construction?
Both, yeah, both.
But pre-construction, there, that's more en masse than we see than process.
Yeah, but I'm thinking in terms of...
Like in terms of moving people around and things, they'll have more of the concerns than we see than we would have.
But I think, I think the way, you know, the original schedule was laid out before things got to lane, doing it in a linear fashion, Phil was done, Mark shows up, hey, how's it going? And then he starts, you know, and...
Yeah.
There's a, you know, whether it's a direct overlap or it's staggered for a few months or whatever, there's going to be a lot more coordinated.
Yep.
And we need to know what issues we're going to have, because if we decide we're going to report with an accelerated schedule, then we need to go back to the church and then we just...
Well, that's what I was just going to say. We don't...
Does any, have, have you had any discussions, David, with them about cost, or...
No, I've been waiting to see whether the space was suitable for you. And I also wondered to see what the planning board had to say.
Well, I think once next week is off, we can dip the ground running on it and start really forging forward.
Taking a look at...
Yes.
How long that process is going to take and the steps necessary.
Yeah. And again, we'll have everybody here back on the fifth just to coordinate things moving forward.
Okay.
Okay? Super. All right, we're right on time for 7 o'clock.
Do you need us to sing for later before...
I don't think so. I think we, I think we've had enough for tonight.
It's surprising to hear Father say that because we, the parishioners have paid for the...
Jane, was there anything else that we needed to know?
That is under the auspices of the...
Was there anything else we needed to know tonight?
Yeah.
I don't know what to say to that. That's just what I was told.
Yeah. That might be some of his reasons for coming to Hadley.
I don't know.
Are you all in there?
How well are you?
Are you in the city? Have you called back as early as you did last time?
Well, we have the focus to do that.
Thank you. How new!
Could we have the rest of the DPW committee? Are we back?
I guess we're tied up.
I've got a tie on. Welcome, I guess the DPW search committee has a nomination for us tonight, and who would like to do the presentation.
David? I'd be happy to. So the committee, we worked, I would say, fairly quickly. We got, we got the interviews out of the way, did several interviews, and a second round of interviews, and we'd like to make the unanimous recommendation that Christopher Okafor is, is hired. Christopher has an extensive, extensive background in public works and adult education and several other great experiences that'll be an asset to the town of Hadley. His most recent experience was in Maynard, if I'm not mistaken. And so this Mr. Okafor is sitting, sitting back here.
Good evening.
He's, if his appointment is approved, he plans to move to the area and get started, get the ground running. So I forwarded you the resume, so you've probably seen all that, and I don't know if Hank or Merle, if you guys wanted to say anything as far as, or Molly.
Tell us about the process or how...
Well, I think as we went through the process, through the question-and-answer sessions, my experience was that it became apparent to me that he has an extensive background and experience. And as I talked about three months ago with all the reports and files lined up on my desk, I think that coupled with the interview process, I think, Mr. Okafor can probably take them reports and move it forward. I think that was my big takeaway.
I, I agree with that, and I also feel that he's, he's the man to take us forward in, in Hadley and build on our DPW.
And one thing I would just add, too, as part of the process, is Sharon Gifford was a member of the committee. Obviously, he would be working very closely with Sharon, and also had the opportunity to go down and visit the DPW facilities before he came to his second interview.
Before he said yes?
And the good news is, he came to the interview. And, and also you spent a little bit of time with Bill Kelly as well, and both Sharon and Bill, you know, expressed tremendous comfort with Mr. Okafor.
I will say, one thing I think the committee learned in general was the fact that his, his knowledge and experience was up to date. We had some trouble finding recent experience in candidates, and candidates that were up to date on current regulations and things like MS4 and some things like that.
And could you just tell our viewers at home licenses or anything else that you might have? Does he have water licenses and things of those natures?
I have a military certified rewarning, I'm an infrastructure inspector, construction inspector. I also have wide knowledge of, of solid waste and recycling, recycling, I was a recycling coordinator in Connecticut, licensed by the state of Connecticut. In terms of water, I have water, I have water and sewer, but I don't have the license for water. I'd like to have wide knowledge of water and sewer in my background.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything just to go?
If you'd like to.
Would, would you like to say anything?
Ah, yes.
We, we know you would, so...
I just want to, Marichi, I just want to thank the, the search committee and also the select board for giving me the opportunity to come before the board tonight. The only thing I need to say is that if I'm given the opportunity to, I, I'm not, I'm a quick learner, I have enough experience to start the job right away. I have, I tend to, I have been in, it's a privilege to serve, have served community like Hadley, and so I have an idea and experience what the board will expect from someone like me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Entertaining motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Okafor as DPW director contingent upon background investigation and successful contract negotiations.
Second motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Nice meeting you often.
Nice to meet you. Looking forward to working with you.
Randy, what are we doing tonight?
What are we doing tonight? You have something for exotic auto?
Exotic auto. Yes, I do for the...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, yes, I do. All righty. Well, you're on the first of the list there. I mean, I guess we'll have to take that out of the consent agenda. We have, did you want to vote on anything else on the consent agenda and just take that one out?
That's fine.
We have...
There's anything else to...
Yeah, everything else there looks good.
Okay.
Jennifer? I have a request for the Stony Brook Cider for the farmer's, wine, farmer's market permit. Part of the requirements is that we have a certificate from the M D A R, but the person who issues those certificates has been on the office for a week, and they'll be back next week, so I'm asking you to make that license contingent upon us receiving the certificate from the Mass Department of Agriculture.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And also, we have someone here from Stony Brook Cider a few months.
Okay.
So are we going to take it out or leave it in, or...
Whatever you want to do. Do you want to do contingency?
Leave it in with a contingency. Are you going to read this?
I can. Well, actually, I don't know why I don't have it like you have it.
Oh.
I don't have that.
You don't have that?
I have that. Executive, whoops, let me get that back there. I have farmer's market...
Can you scroll up?
Yeah, you scroll up to it.
Oh, yeah, there we go. There we go. It's getting late, you know? Let's see, September...
It's ten after seven.
It just felt like it should be later. I'm just not sure why tonight. The minutes for September 5, 2018, the American Leage easement, which we have signed, and it's been notarized, one-day liquor license for top of the campus, faculty and staff appreciation night, reception for basketball champion center, December 11. And then we have the Stony Brook Center, South Hadley, to sell the Amherst Winter Market, held at the Hampshire Mall, eight alternate weeks starting on December 1, 2018, and that will be with a contingency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then we will take up the exotic auto sales and repairs.
Okay.
And what is your presentation tonight?
What is my presentation? I have some paper, some plans to put before you.
And just tell people where this is located.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I'll give you the paperwork, and then I'll describe what's happening.
Okay.
It'll be quieter than the planning board meeting, so nobody will like to...
Nobody is confused.
Thank God, I started out that way, didn't I, huh?
I'm more curious about what you're building out and...
We can get to that.
Okay.
All right, so, I'm here representing exotic automotive service and sales. Mr. Paul Naris is the proposed owner of said building. This is what is being, Lesco's Garage on the corner of River Drive and Cummins Road. There is an existing car dealership there, I believe it's called Riverside Auto Sales. Jack Kerschless, who passed away a year and some time ago, he had a license, a class-two dealer's license for 10 cars. Mr. Naris wants to, is here tonight to get a used car dealer's license. We have been before the planning board, the plan you see in front of you... Just so you're aware, on this plan, over on Cummins roadside, you see cars for sale 1 through 5, cars for repair 6 through 10. Planning board has said, we don't care what the cars are for, as long as there are no more than 10 cars in that spot, so...
There could be 10 repair cars there.
Right, 10 repair cars, 10 for sale cars, any combination thereof, just no more than 10 cars there. So, just to make things simple, if things, you know, change in the future, right now, he thinks that he might want to sell five cars, but if the repairs go bad and the sales are good, if we have it lined up for 10, then he doesn't have to come back before the board. And again, we are limited to the number of cars that can go on the site.
And the garage is staying the same?
Yeah.
And the house is not going anywhere?
Correct. Nothing's going to change on the outside, that would have had to be shown on this plan if, before the planning board, they would have been very concerned about that. The, we have a, basically, it's a grandfathered, pre-existing, non-conformity.
So, are they, are you, you're going to be putting green space along Cummins Road area?
Yes.
Which isn't now?
It's black space right now.
It is, yes.
It's blacktop space.
Yeah.
The concern was that people are cutting the corner, so the planning board wanted something to prevent that. So, when spring comes, there'll be green space created, there'll be a sign there. So, I think that would curtail people from cutting across, but one never knows.
What kind of cars are you going to focus on? Are you going to make some models, new stuff, old stuff, or maybe junkyard?
No, no, no. Usually like three-year-old cars.
Okay.
Probably buy cars off lease.
Okay.
So, Japanese, American, German, and the termites.
Was exotic auto on Route 9 before? No?
It is there now.
It is there now.
It's trying to stay there.
It's going to stay there, so you're a second location?
Yeah, a little space problem over here, so...
In case nobody noticed.
Is there a camp apartment from that garage right now? Is that yours, or is that the other owner?
No, that's the other owner.
Okay.
It's currently gone.
Okay.
Okay, so, and are you renting this property?
No, I'm...
You bought it from Kirsten?
He doesn't own it yet.
Oh, this one, yes, this one I bought it.
You're going to buy it?
Yes.
Okay.
He's proposing to buy it on the 16th. He's just trying to get all his permits lined up before he signs on the line.
So, then, are we going to issue a permit before he purchases the property, or is it going to be contingent?
Um...
Or is he going to actually have, I mean, there's a little bit of a gray area there about whether or not...
Yeah, I'm not sure of the legality of it. I'm sure that you can issue it contingent upon him purchasing the property, because without him purchasing the property, the license is no good to him anyhow.
Yeah, you've done this before. On a project under development.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that we're all on the same page.
No, there's no problem. He doesn't intend to sell cars tomorrow. He just wants, again, he's got all his ducks lined up.
It'll take me like two, three months to get the property back.
Sure.
A lot of repairs. And then, once I get everything going, then I'll come back to Jennifer, because she needs the workers' comp and all that, so I give all the certificates, and then she'll issue the license. So, three, four months I need, if I'm still...
Okay.
So, your location looks good. I just want to caution that it's not Route 9, so...
Yeah.
You know, appearances matter, and it's a residential neighborhood for the most part.
Yes. You know, with all respect to the neighbors, I mean, there's one lady across, and once we go through this process, I'm going to go down to her and ask her about the lights, because she was concerned about the lights. So, I'll ask her what kind of lights she would like to, you know, so it doesn't bother her. But I'll work with the neighbors. I live there, so...
So, you're a neighbor, you're sure?
Yeah, I live there, so...
For the benefit of the select board, we went through all this stuff with the planning board. There was, there were abutters there that voiced their concerns, and that's how we ended up with the plan that we have. If, and if you remember Lesco's, that was just completely covered with cars and who knows what, and they were out in 47, and that was a big concern as well, that the cars don't park in 47.
Right.
So, we're going to mark off the parking lot where they can and cannot park, so that there shouldn't be an issue. And Paul's been made aware, not only by the planning board and the select board and the neighbors, that if he doesn't behave himself, he's going to be in big trouble. And he's willing to take on the challenge.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
I think a motion to approve the permit contingent upon the successful purchase of the property. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck, too.
To answer your question, Molly, I'm building a garage, and put some of my stuff in, and then I may, if I, I got a lot of interest from contractors, people looking for space, so I may utilize part of it for that, but I have to go before the planning board to get people to do that. So, that's where that's at right now. And I'm trying to get it done before. It snows, but I don't think I'm going to make it.
You mean by Thursday?
Yeah.
Do you need this extra one back?
No, if you don't want it, I'll be happy to take it. If you want one for the files, that's fine.
Do you want one?
Yeah, it'd be nice to have one.
All right, I'll give one to David.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Seven fifteen, land license, public hearing, Russell Street Hospitality. Hi.
Aye.
Come on up.
So, I may bring plans to already in the ground, but it's for three doping tanks. We're over the normal unpermitted limit. So, it's three 2,000 gallon tanks that are in the ground that have been a special permit.
And where's this going to be located?
At 340 Russell Street, the Home and Suites building that's being built right now.
Okay. And you, how about all your permits and things, and have this gone before the fire chief?
Yes, Mike has it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. So, there are going to be two 2,000 gallon tanks. There's 4,000 gallons on here.
Yep.
Yes, so two 2,000 gallon tanks.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
All set?
Aye, thank you.
If it was Chardoul, we would have further discussion.
That's why he sends me.
That's right.
I'm the curator.
Get to less trouble. All right, tax, it's only the three of us, tax classification, public hearing. Whoop, a little early.
It's posted for 7:30.
Yeah, can't do that. Hadley Housing Authority Appointment.
A little early. Richie, oh, your dad's not showing up yet.
Is he coming?
Oh, is he coming?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that would make sense that he would be here, not just you two.
Yeah.
Fire chief contract, submitted a letter.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that was just intent of notice. I told him he didn't have to be here tonight for that. So, we had to do this six months out ahead of time to notify him and notify us of his intent, and so that's where we are. Any questions?
I don't think I was just in the contract that talks about the annual performance review.
Mm-hmm.
We've done it.
I think we did it last year. We're going to do one this year.
Yes. I was just reading through, just to refresh my memory, and it says...
There was one last year, right? We did it on, we did it on the chief.
Last year, we presented goals and objectives, but there wasn't a...
There's a performance review.
There wasn't a performance review for any of the contracted employees.
Okay, yeah. So, I'm, you know, it's in the contract, or should we plan on...
Well, it's probably in all of their contracts, and we haven't done anybody's. We did the performance things last year, like he said. But we didn't, we did yours? We did your evaluation?
Yeah, we did David's.
Did mine?
Did yours?
Actually, we did, we did Mike Mason's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the same as the goals and objectives?
No, no, these are actual...
How did we...
Self evaluations.
How did we not do the chief's last year? How'd that slip by us? Well, we can still do it now, so maybe you want to dig out one of those evaluation papers for all of us?
Well, so, the board should review and evaluate the chief every year from the date of appointment. Should be based on the goals and objectives jointly agreed upon.
So, I guess we would need a list of goals and objectives from last year for the fire chief and evaluation form. And I don't know what the timeframe on that will be, maybe the second meeting of December?
So, his current contract is until June 30th?
Oh, so, so, maybe give people a little extra time on that then, to get the goals and objectives, and then look at the evaluation form?
Yep.
And set it for January, February?
Okay.
Joyce?
Yes?
Excuse me. I was just informed that Richie doesn't have to be here, but as long as the two of us are here, we can vote for him.
Well, did he want to be here? I mean...
I don't think he's going to come.
I told him, I told him 7:45, just, I know on tax classification hearing was last, so I told him 7:45, but they posted, the Hadley Housing Authority posted for 6:00 P. M., and we have his letter of interest. So, anytime y'all would like to take the vote, you can technically take the vote without him being present.
Okay.
Maybe Marlo's here for public comment, I don't know.
Were you here for public comment?
Oh, I need Paul.
Did you want to stay? Thank you for coming.
Well, just one quick note, I appreciated the invite to be on the search committee. I think we all did a great job, and I wish Chris Oakfor the best. He does have my contact information, so if I can give any help in the transition, I told him to reach out, and it didn't move forward.
Thank you. How's your job going?
Good, very good.
Good.
Not crazy as anywhere, but good.
I see a lot of DPW activity up in Greenfield these days.
Yeah, we got a lot going on.
Yeah.
And we'll be moving in across the street soon, I think, in the next couple, three weeks.
Very good. Glad things are going well for you.
I'll be around.
Okay.
We know you know how to find us, too.
We have your, we have your number still.
Changed the locks.
Okay, so...
House meetings are on Tuesday nights, so it still might be like it's not here on Wednesday nights.
All right, so housing, Hadley Housing Authority Appointment, then we can do that. We have the vacancy, and...
You just have one or two?
Two.
Two vacancies, right?
Two vacancies.
The second one's a residence, right?
Yeah, yes. Richie, he'll be taking over Terry Yusko's position.
All right. What do you want to, Richie has submitted a letter of interest to be on the housing authority?
Yes, she has.
We have it here.
We have it right here.
Oh, you have it there.
Right in front of us.
It's short and sweet, I like these. "I, Rich Whitkus, am interested about being a board member for the Hadley Housing Authority. Signed, Rich Whitkus." It's a handful of words.
We hope his term is not as short and sweet as that.
We'll see.
Motion to appoint Richie Whitkus as a board member for the Hadley Housing Authority.
Second.
All right, all favor?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Just till April election.
Keegan? Chunglo?
Yes.
Until the April, just, oh, your point is, until the April election, just like the petition.
Okay. Just appointed, right?
Yes.
Mr. Yusko, how do you vote?
Yeah, yes. Aye, aye.
It's a roll call vote.
Proper way.
You got to...
Is that a yes?
A yes.
Okay, that's all we're looking for. Thank you. See, this wasn't as simple as his letter, was it? No. Okay. And...
Meeting schedule?
I don't know what that is. Anyway, what's that?
Meeting schedule.
Meeting schedule, but nobody else is here. I don't think it's going to, I don't even have a calendar for next year. Yeah. Didn't we do some of that last time?
Yeah, you did January, but it was February and March. Do this one.
Seven. I'm going to go get another planner, is what I got to do. Okay.
I'm going to put this off until we've got the...
But we did February, we did 6 and 20 in February. Where were you?
Where was I?
I have those, I have the 9 and the 23 on January, and I have 6 and 20 on February.
All right. Can we throw February 13th in there for good measure?
Why?
Deadline for the annual town meeting articles.
I suppose so, if we have to have three of them.
That was on Valentine's Day last year. It's the 20th during school vacation. You just travel a lot.
Well, we could just do two meetings.
Just go in the backyard.
Could just do two meetings in February, the 6th and the 13th, if we don't want to do the 20th.
She was just trying to warm out of the March meeting. She was trying, she wanted a thicker one for occasions, so...
No. Okay.
I don't have any issues with any of those things.
Okay. All right, so then we'll look at March later on.
So, three meetings in February or two?
You want to go for two or three? What do we need? Do we need anything extra? Well, let's do two. Let's do the first two, and if we need to put one on, on the third, we can.
Yeah, it will be, you know, that dastardly budget.
There you go. It'll, it'll come along, I'm sure.
It's just season, that's right.
Yeah.
So, the second and the 13th or 20th is not going to be scheduled for now.
Right. Okay, so, let's do, 7:30. Okay, let's do the tax classification hearing. Last week, we were presented by Dan Zadonik and the assessors on the pros and cons of, yes, a single rate or a split rate. And they did a presentation for us, and if we have all heard what we want to do, does anybody have any motion for tonight? Do you have any further discussion?
Make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the assistant assessor on this.
And that is?
To stay with a single, thank you. To stay with a single, I'm trying to put something in my calendar, and I can, there are too many steps, it's ridiculous. And stay with a single, single rate system.
12:36.
12:36 for now.
I'll second that.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the assistant assessor on this.
And that is?
To stay with a single, thank you, to stay with a single. I'm trying to put something in my calendar, and I can, there are too many steps, it's ridiculous. And stay with a single, single rate system.
12:36.
12:36 for now.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, singles, single tax rate.
All right.
Okay.
We have something for you to sign on that one.
What do we do?
Tax classification.
Okay. Is it a lot?
No, just a couple things.
Do you have my folder?
Do I have your folder?
The other folder?
No, I didn't bring it up.
Please excuse me.
All right. All right. New Connecticut River Stormwater Committee, M.O.A.
This is whether we want to continue our membership in the Connecticut River Stormwater Committee hosted by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This is something that Marlo and I worked on back when MS4 was new and different. The idea is that we would get a bunch of towns together to interpret, come up with a consensus of how to interpret the new regulations applied for grants jointly to, to take advantage of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for some of the boilerplate work that would have to be done to comply with the new regulations. And so, we, it's time to renew our membership with this. I'd recommend that we proceed with the committee, given that we have a change of leadership here, and MS4 does churn along, and we have some things to do in the next fiscal year.
And, oh, Marlo, were you just sitting, you were a representative on this committee, right?
Yes, whenever one of us could make it or both.
Yeah.
I think, you know, if I may speak just for a minute.
No, please.
The, you know, we are under contract with CEI to help us through the MS4, but there will be a lot of, there is a lot of good knowledge that comes out of these meetings when we attend them, so I would certainly, I would incur a danger, I would recommend staying aboard with the change of leadership, even though we got a consultant firm that will be able to guide the individual also. I think it would be boo hoo for another year.
Does it cost us anything to be aboard?
I believe it's $2,000 per year, but there's a lot of information, and there's a lot of work done for us. A lot of, sometimes you get a lot of information ahead of, you know, consultant firms with those that are happening with that program, so direct contact with...
Cross the name on it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue our participation in the MS4 committee.
And you feel like Chris is up, would be up to date, and he said he did, was familiar with MS4?
Yeah, he's just going to be, have to get acclimated to our permit area, and what's going to be required here, because different permit areas will require different testing and whatnot.
No, I messed up.
Oh, okay.
Sign up the top, please.
Oh, I see.
The next page too, please.
And that, it was budgeted.
Okay.
Yeah, you're lucky you don't have MS4 up in Greenfield.
No, but we've got a much larger, older, separated sewer and drain system that is highly being washed by, for ionized, so we've got our home...
So, you don't have it because you're not along the river, is that why, or is it?
It just, it didn't make the permit this time around.
Yeah, nothing in Franklin County.
But there's the other side of MS4, the ionized, which we proved is pretty good here, meaning lapping thereof, but we've got to deal with some ionized in Greenfield, so...
Is there a motion for speed? Is there a motion?
Motion?
Was there a motion made in the second?
For what?
Yeah, I made it, to approve it.
Yeah, we did.
Second, second that motion.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
Did we though?
Oh, I didn't see all in favor.
All in favor? I thought I did.
I think you asked me about it.
Someone's like, you distracted me, Marlo.
I'm going to call about it.
I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, I think the only thing left is the town administrator report.
And there's not a whole lot that's different between this week and last week. You, we've worked an awful lot on the numbers for the financing for the projects, you've heard all about that. Jennifer has been working very hard on the website project redesign, and she's got pages being reviewed by the department heads. She has a training scheduled for tomorrow, both during the daytime for department heads and at nighttime for the boards and committees. And we're hoping for a launch date of January 2nd for the new website.
Great.
I've already talked about DPW, search committee, special election, just a reminder for everybody that we do have a special election coming up on December 18th. One is for the dump truck to be borrowed for five years and the tax impact on the average. Single-family home is $6.34 per year for five years. And then Hopkins Academy Kitchen Equipment Replacement, again, borrowing for four, five years, tax impact is expected to be $4.18 per year. And that's about it.
Okay, any news? Got Hartbrook School Holiday Fair, it looks like on November 17th. Hadley Festival of Lights on November 24th, and you already said the special election.
And don't forget the Hadley Mothers Club.
And Mothers Club this Saturday, Crafts Fair, 9 to 4, 9 to 5? 9 to 4, I think.
No, it starts at 9, yeah, I don't remember if it's 3.
I think it's 4, but...
That sounds right.
Yeah.
I've got one question on that. If we could go back to the meetings for a minute. We have February 2nd on here, which according to my calendar is a Saturday. Can't be February 2nd.
Probably a typo.
Yeah, I don't have...
I have February 6th.
That's circle for my hair, mine, so I don't know how you've got that one. It's a hair day.
It should be February 6th.
6.
6.
6 and 13. Any other announcements this evening?
Not really an announcement, but just information sharing. So, David and I are going to be meeting...
On the...
No, two weeks.
Two weeks.
After Thanksgiving, we're going over to meet with the IT director in Northampton about the possibility of doing something with that IT grant, so we'll get updated information, because everything that I had learned previously has somewhat failed at this point, so we'll see if that still is a viable option for kind of content management system that they could host for us.
Okay.
The deadline for that grant is February 15th, so we're working on this, but...
So, for some reason, this doesn't seem viable.
It can come up with another idea.
All right, I just have three condolences this evening. I have Helen O'Brien, who's lived in town for 50 years, and I have Fanny C. Eli, who was the daughter of the late Sylvia Barrett. Sylvia's husband Dave still lives in town. And today, there was Stephen Bristol, who was a lifelong resident of Hadley, so condolences to all of their families and friends from the select board.
And can I say thank you to Dr. McKenzie and Chief Mason and Chief Spangnabel for their excellent communication with, not only the select board, but with parents and other people in town as well.
They do do a good job on that. We did have an incident in town, and I think with all the robo calls and things that went out today, most townspeople were aware of that. They had a lockdown at the elementary school and the high school, and until it was cleared and everything was fine, they did a great job with their presence and keeping everybody calm and checking things out. Thank you. Entertain a motion, oh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
That's right.
Have a nice holiday next week. Okay?
You as well.
And you as well.
Wash your t-shirt.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.